You see.
Our, uh, that's a different debt. We'll, we can do that later. Okay.
Okay.
All right. And then we have Public Works. Like I said, this had dropped. I got this number from Charles Abbott. And so they feel they'll come in below that forty-two, but just a few dollars in there for contingencies in case something pops up, so.
We, like you said, we don't see, all the major projects are done. This should just be maintenance-related.
Okay. Do they charge us a monthly fee just to have them on staff?
No, they don't.
It's only by...
Hours used, yes.
Hours used, okay.
Yes, I have not seen, I have not seen that yet. Like, we have that with our data ticket where if we don't use it, it's a hundred dollars a month. You're earnest. No, they don't charge us that.
And then this is the NPDES. The only salaries and wages of this year is, I think, thirty percent of Ruby, or ten percent of Ruby, um, and her benefits. And then membership dues and publication, that's the, what's the thing we're in?
Leger.
Leger is twenty. And then the, um, the L, TMDL is in there as well.
It was twenty-three for that, for TMDL.
And so the cost's pretty even to the prior year, from seventy-four to seventy-three. Those costs are going up, so. We should talk to NBS about trying to generate some sort of fee or tax to recoup some of this money. They have ways and we can get them to do this presentation with the next finances. And then this is Special Enforcement. It looks like salaries were up. Remember that number last year was reduced by, I think, sixty-five hundred dollars. And so overall, between NPDES and Special Enforcement, we're down about six thousand in salaries. Um, everything else is pretty consistent with the prior year. Uh, no great changes. Any questions on this budget? And then we have Building and Facilities Maintenance. That's mainly just the utilities and like the janitors, the maintenance, that kind of stuff. And then the rents for the building, and which is the library or the annex of the library and then the conference room. And that's what that life lease is.
And with regards to the janitorial, and there also mentioned some on-call. Mike met with POA yesterday. And they evaluated the building and see what they can do. They're gonna be coming back to us with some numbers here shortly for both janitorial and on-call.
And then also in that Professional Specialized Service has the annual fee for the elevators. So all that kind of stuff in here and the, to do the, the air conditioners and the electrical and all that's in here. And so pretty consistent with the prior year. And then now, now, this is the gas tax. And that SB one is that one hundred and ninety-three thousand. Um, I think you see the prior year was sixty-two, which was just part of the year. And so depending on whether it gets repealed or not, we may get all of it or some of it. You know, most cities have thousands of square miles of roads and we only have two, right?
So it won't be that big of a hit.
And then we have a pretty decent gas tax balance, so.
Terry, SB one's already collected quite a bit of fees today. So let's say the budget goes and it's repealed. Do they still distribute those fees?
They would distribute what they collect, I would assume.
Okay. So we still will get some SB one fees?
Part of it. And we will, we will spend them.
That's right. Well, like I said, like Terry said, we will spend the SB ones first in case there's no maintenance. Sorry, they're expended.
Sorry, they're gone.
I'm not gonna tell you how I'm voting on the rebuild.
No, no.
I drive a lot on the freeways. If it helps, my God, keep them on. This is the gas tax expenditures. And you can see this drop quite a bit because the slurry seal is done. Um, and that landscape maintenance is another, what, twenty-seven thousand, Mike, to finish the mulch in the median. And Mike's gonna run that project, so we won't have to market up at Charles Abbott, so.
So we had previously approved, I think it was a little over fifteen to do mulch. So that's already been, um, budgeted for.
We'll just roll that over to next year.
And then just last week, I, I actually personally, did you see me? I was out in the median walking for a couple of miles. And we were identifying all the, uh, the bear spots. So, um, I have an estimated amount of somewhere between twelve and potentially thirteen thousand to, to do that. Now, that's gonna fix the bear areas, um, maybe put a little bit DG down, depending where there may be some bear spots. But it's gonna get Canyon Lake, uh, River Canyon, I should say, looking proper down on River Canyon Road. Now that we did the, uh, the slurry seal. You know, we want everything to kind of look...
Did you get your landscaping due?
I, I did not, no.
That's all right.
So that's why I had, uh...
That's why you got it from four thousand down to four hundred?
Yeah.
With plants, that is?
Yeah, yeah. No, yeah, I actually, I did a count. We did a count. We were, we were trying to identify, you know, the plants that we needed out there. And you're right, initially, I think that estimate was somewhere around forty-two hundred plants.
Yeah, so...
And we got it down to six hundred and fifty.
The council can give us some, four hundred plant sounds a lot more tolerable to deal with, right? Than the forty-two hundred that was on the... So we, we thought you'd like that better, but we just wanted to make sure, because we heard, I, I specifically heard in other words, no, don't renege it ever again.
So the number is six fifty now, from forty-two hundred to six fifty.
Well, we just want it to be nice, but we can't, I mean, we can't have it be less than this.
No, no.
It looks nicer when there's less plants and bear spots, I mean, mulch, than in overgrown pile of plants that require then more maintenance, which I'm sure they knew when they gave us the estimate.
Yeah, and so when we, when I walked the whole area, it was just kind of sporadically putting stuff out in the bear, in the bear spots. But I, I thought it would be a whole lot less. In fact, I thought it would be probably about half. But it turned out to be there a lot more bear spots than I actually thought, so.
Next time dealt with a drone and sail the street, huh?
No, I, I was actually a little worried.
Yeah, and it, it got a little scary, but no, I'm, I'm still here.
But Mike, the, the blue lines that are exposed, they're gonna be covered.
Yeah, yeah. So a lot of that purple pipes is in the, uh, the sound wall area, kind of on the outside of the medium. There is some, some of it in the medium, so that is gonna be covered too as well. But yeah, the, the, what they're gonna do is they're gonna anchor them down and the mulch is gonna go over it. The challenge is gonna be that one hillside right next to the driving range. It is so sliding and so steep that, um, they said that the mulch, I mean, it'll, it'll go down, but potentially over time, it's gonna slowly work its way down just because of how steep it is. But they're gonna see what they can do and, uh, part of how you kind of fix that is you cover it up with more plants. So, um, I have identified that area to put part of that six fifty, some, um, some, uh, specific sage plants that will help cover that too as well, so. I'm hoping that'll do it, but we'll just kind of have to wait and see. I'm hoping the mulch will do it, but yeah, the plan is to anchor it down.
Why, why don't, why don't they use rock there?
In, in that, in that area there? I, I don't know. Rock is a little bit expensive. I think that was one thing. I didn't include rocks in part of this. It was just gonna be plants. But the steep, it, it has too much of a slope that, um, you'd almost be digging into it and laying rocks and it just wouldn't look...
It'd be almost like resemening the rocks.
Yeah, kind of. You're, you're sort of creating, you would create almost like a platform of dirt when you lay the rock and it just wouldn't look properly. I, I think that the, the most cost-efficient way is to actually, uh, there's a particular plant that we have out there. It's called Mexican sage. And, and that, if you put that throughout that area, I think we'll cover most of that. And I think that should part of it. And it'd be a whole lot easier than having to deal with, uh, large boulders and rocks out there.
I'm just leaning towards small rock. Even so, there's still, I mean, that one particular spot is just gonna be...
Yeah. If it wasn't so steep, you know, I probably could, you know, you know, be open to that too. But, but it's a lot steeper than I actually thought it was until I walked it out there, so. So that wall is the one that's most challenging of all, so the medium is a piece of cake.
So the gas tax fund is healthy. Um, if we get the SB one and even last year we spent, we'll end up with two hundred and eighty thousand on the slurry seal. Right, we budgeted like, we budgeted five thirty. It came in approximately three fifty. We'll find the lesson, and the council's already authorized just to use that to do phase two of fencing.
So we'll, we'll end the year, this year in good shape with the gas tax fund. And then next year, we'll have enough money to, to complete the fencing, and so we'll be...
And Terry, we can use the gas to paint that wrought iron that isn't to a degree.
Right.
So that, well, that's the fund source.
That, that's the plan. I've asked for them to get, I've already talked to Margaret and let them know that we're, phase three will be painted, you know, obviously, um, so there might be some minor hardware replacement then, just in case. But we're gonna paint phase three instead of replacing.
And keep in mind too, the plants, that's all covered too with the gas tax, correct?
Yes.
And mulch.
Mm-hmm.
It's all, it's all the median part of it.
So it's all, yeah, so it's all gas tax.
And then this is the Mejerae Fund, um, and also a healthy fund. We've been using it to repay the two county loans, or, I'm sorry, the RCTC loan and then the County General Fund loan. I think there's one more a year after this on both loans, so we're getting close there, so. But this money is also restricted to transportation. And so we can't use it for anything other than two miles for service.
Is it two miles or a mile?
It's about two miles, two miles for service. And the median and the coal burns, that kind of stuff, so.
Right now, it's a pretty, it's two.
Right. And then in the past, we've, we've kind of accumulated the Mejerae and the gas tax. And then when we do a project, well, like in ninety-four, they did a bond issue. And then other years, they got the WRCOG. And so we kind of use WRCOGS, the town money, plus our gas tax, plus our Mejerae, plus like a bond fund from the state. So we use multiple sources so we don't have to, you know, use toll and general. And then HQMD Fund, we bought a car, a truck.
The Highlander.
The Highlander. And so nothing planned this year. And so we get about twelve grand a year, and so that expenditure will get rid of, what, four years? Five years? Almost five years. And so, um, Mike has a list of what's available. And so they'll be working on coming back sometime mid-year or for next by doing a new project for that money. So it's very limited to what we can spend it on, so.
Right.
And we touched on communications. Can that be, the communication?
Most of it has to do with reducing vehicle trips.
Okay.
And so one time we did bus passes available, but no one used them. You know, we offered like seniors, they could take a bus pass and go, you know, where's our...
I'm not sure about communication.
It's part of, it's part of the reducing trips.
I'll, I'll get a little bit further. I mean, for the most part, a lot of it, it has to do with vehicle and fuel efficiency and those type of things, charging stations.
The only thing I think, if you put in a charging station, it has to help to the public, right?
Correct, that's correct. So, yeah, yeah.
But I mean, that'd be a good idea, 'cause I don't know how many electrical vehicles or those are in town here. But, I mean, everybody's going that way, so.
And, and we're, you know, we're also exploring the potential of maybe surplusing one of the vehicles. As, you know, we've had an issue, Donna had an issue with one of the vehicles that she had to deal with all the way from Palm Desert. And, um, vehicle's been fixed, however, that impact, that, that vehicle was purchased through AKD money, but we're responsible for the maintenance part of it. But, you know, these vehicles are now, I believe, the, the car is about almost ten years old and so is the truck.
And it could be a new vehicle, right?
As long as it's a, it's a hybrid vehicle, so there, there is a possibility that we may even look into that. It just kind of depends. I'm hoping that we can still keep these vehicles a little longer.
So you can see that we, we're in New York with about seventy-one thousand, which is more than enough for another vehicle in case that's the way you go, so. And they, um, they have a, they have to mail them your audit, which we do. And then they have an online thing that you have to fill out. And it was due like February first, and they redone their system and it's still not up and running. And so if, if you miss like a deadline with them for like a half hour, they make you pay. But four months later, they still haven't got their own sufferer running. But we got audited last year and they came out and they go, we're gonna be here for like five days. And I go, we haven't spent that dime in five years. What are you gonna spend five days on? But they only spent one day, so. True.
I read an article just a couple of days ago, I wish I'd printed it, um, about electric cars. And judging by the facts presented in that article, it looks like electric cars are not going to be increasing, shouldn't be increasing, they should be decreasing. Because if you figure the cost of, for one thing, the charging stations, you can't put them too close because it uses too much of the, the grid. So it's very, I think it was like for a city block, you can only have two. And other than that, it would be over, excess on the grid. And the cost of the electricity and it just broke down everything. And in the long run, it just doesn't make sense. It's a pie in the sky thing that they thought, oh, this is wonderful. But if you really look at all the numbers crunched, it's not a good thing. So I think it's probably going to be declining, so I don't think we need to worry about charging stations.
All right, so then the next fund is the Law Enforcement Grants Fund. And a couple of years ago, they, they changed the law or the governor did some switching. And so now we get adjusted for inflation. It's a guaranteed, um, money every year. Um, it'll be like, I think, one thirty this year, so I bet you one twenty-nine, so it'll be right around there. And we use this money and every six months, I transfer, um, some of the money to the General Fund to offset the sheriff's contribution. And so that's what we do twice a year. So there's no, no restrictions on it other than law enforcement. And we're more than, have enough law enforcement costs to cover it. And if you talk to your supervisors, tell them, there used to be a requirement where you had to fill out a form saying how you're gonna spend it and then a form of how you spent it. But it's not required anymore, but they're still making me do it and I have no real problem with that. So if you see the supervisors, tell them.
We can quote bring that up tomorrow as well.
It's none of their dang business, so. And then here's our capital project funds. We have about three hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars in it that we could use for projects. So we have no planned projects for next year. Um, that would be something for Aaron and Mike to accomplish, so. And then this is, I ran this slide and I don't know what page it is in your book, viewer. Oh, it's not in the book. So this is just on your screen here. So I took the last three full fiscal years with actual audited numbers and with the UUT. So I have the fire structure fee, the utility users' tax, and then that first year, we had some county money towards fire, and then all other revenues. So you can see we had three million eight hundred and forty-five thousand. And then for expenditures, we had public safety, which is, um, for this purpose, this is just fire, police, and animal control, and then all other expenditures. And so you see, we operated at a deficit of three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Then for fifteen sixteen was the year that we had a quarter with no fire protection services. And we ended the year with a million and fifty-one positive. And then the next year, we had the shared contract and we ended the year six hundred and nine thousand positive. And I took those same three years and backed out the utility user tax. And you can see the difference there. We went from the end of sixteen seventeen, we had three point nine million. We would've ended up with one million seven oh two. And that two million two ninety-one, that is the three years of, uh, actual UUT money we received for those three years. That's the total. And fifteen, fourteen fifteen was just a partial year. We just started collecting the money. And so then I took the same schedule and went, can't really read it for some reason, but I have it somewhere, I hope. No, I don't have it, so in print, so I can't read it. But I took the budget. Do we have our copy of the same one?
You can adjust it.
What's that? How do I adjust it? Oh, I see what you're saying, yeah. I could do it on a laptop, but...
What you do is you go up here.
That's, that's like, you should, my building, right? Oh, perfect, okay. See? That's why we don't need to walk in the median.
See, it's not just a landscape.
I'm ready to quit and get up.
He's got his IT hat on now, I mean.
And so you, you can see this was the, that, that starting number, that three million nine ninety-three was the ending one with the UUT. And so I took the, put the UUT in for the first two years. And so I'm figuring at the end of eighteen nineteen, we're gonna be at three million five twenty. Without the UUT for the five years, you can see at eighteen nineteen, we would've been deficit general fund balance and not long for the world. And so for, for, for the budget hearing in next week, I'm gonna run my five-year projection with and without. And so we'll have that for you next week, so.
I think that would be one of the things we need to use when we're coming up with the vote for the new UUT tax. We have to show off those numbers.
And so here, so here we have the budget, fiscal year eighteen nineteen. So our general government expenses are eight hundred and fifty-five. Our developmental services are five fifty-two. And our public safety is four million one thirty-seven. And you can see that's just under seventy-five percent of the budget. And with those going up anywhere from five to fifteen, twenty percent a year, you know, the revenues don't follow that. And so public safety expenditures, that breakdown there is law enforcement, fire, emergency preparedness, and animal control. And then our only true dedicated revenue towards public safety is the fire structure fee. And so you see, we have to come up with three point one million dollars to cover those public safety costs from other sources, so. And that doesn't leave a lot for the other, other departments, so. But that concludes the presentation of the budget.
So discussion for the council, like, like I think I told everybody individually, this is pretty much a rollover budget just because, um, we're being very cautious about the UUT. And so we don't wanna really put anything out there. So if you guys have any recommendations of things that you think you see that we need to do or anything right now, we can go ahead and make those changes and bring them back to me next week. Otherwise, we'll, we'll leave this alone. Does anybody have any questions on what's been presented?
A couple of questions. Terry, are you gonna show all these?
No, I'm gonna have, uh, no more than eight slides next week.
That's what I thought we'd talk about.
For this, in case you're recording it in the public, I want them to see it for the first time. But for next week, we'll just have like eight slides, so.
And then, you know, we've talked about these, looking at the fees, we paid twenty-five thousand. Yeah. Well, we're gonna get the results of it. Do you have a feeling for that?
We've had, we've, NBS. They've met with Building and Safety. That was the last one, correct, Mike? That was the last one we were waiting on.
Unfortunately, we're still kind of waiting on Building and Safety right now. Um, there's still some final review that, uh, that the consulting group is, is wanting to go over with our building official. I believe there was some discussion of doing that last week. I haven't seen any follow-ups to see whether or not they have met. But basically, we're kind of sort of waiting on, on Abbott, Charles Abbott, to, uh, to get this, uh, final review done. So that way it's sent to us and then staff can review it and all in general, but...
Do we need to, um, put Charles Abbott on notice of a timeline if they're delaying our process?
Absolutely. And I, I mentioned it to them a couple of weeks ago when I met with Jim and, and his, his vice president. So I'll follow up with Mr. Podergras and ask him why this hasn't been followed up. Because I specifically mentioned this as one of the issues, because I, I wanted the fee structure in place for July first.
Right, well, it might make a difference in our numbers.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we're not gonna make it if we don't, well, we gotta go to review. It's gonna be like...
Right, and then, and then we'll have a workshop with you on that to make sure that you're comfortable with everything.
We're not gonna make it for this. We're not, we're not gonna make it. It's gonna go into the next fiscal year, unfortunately.
Okay. I mean, I mean, we need to put some heat on, some heat on.
Absolutely.
We failed the same one.
I do have a question. I'm not sure whether this is proper here in open session, but I'm just wondering if council or staff or anybody is going to make any recommendations about extending the UUT tax, UUT tax for an indefinite amount of time and raising the percentage?
That's something that will be brought into the council in order to, we've discussed this. And the idea was to bring the UUT back to the voters this November, and we're on track to do that.
I understand.
And no, the idea is to bring it back to the council in July to make a decision if this is what you wanna do and to approve the language. If so, we'll put it on the ballot.
So are we gonna have a recommendation that's different than what we have now with the tax?
Uh, there's been a lot of discussion about, and Aaron is going to get those numbers, what happens? This is what we have struggling with the UUT. And, and Terry's gonna be able to show that. And Aaron's going to get numbers for us that if there's a slight increase, if there's a slight decrease. Um, and, and as you remember from before, we're at three point nine five percent. Uh, point oh five percent made a huge difference. So these increments that he's gonna look at will be slight. We talked about that before.
Correct.
Uh, to just bring it up so that we would know, this is what you get with this. We know our, our safety, our sheriff, for instance, is going up, we've been told, seven, seven and a half percent. So this is what we would need in order to do that. Or with this little bit more, this is what you get. The UUT doesn't just do our safety. It does all these, many other projects and helps keep the city running. But it is, the, the bulk is, is safety. It's what we're looking at, public safety.
Seventy-five percent of the budget.
Right, so we have to look at what that would do. When I was, when, when this first came up and the UUT was first brought to Canyon Lake, I was actually running for office at the time and had to run trying to propose a tax, which was near suicide. But, um, one of the things is I did my own studies because I was the only one there. Uh, and I learned of these surrounding cities and I would like to dedicate someone. I don't think I'll have the time to do it, but it was a worthy study. You can go on Ballot Media, I think is what I use mostly. And it, I did a study of the surrounding cities in Southern California. And I think I looked at maybe eighty that had UUTs, uh, cities and counties.
There's some more, yeah.
Right. And what was, how did they, how did they vote when it came up again? One out of all of those that I looked at voted to get rid of it. Uh, most voted to increase it and the rest voted to keep it because the public was able to see what they got from it. Uh, so it's, it's really telling. Uh, when I hear complaints about, about, uh, having to pay the UUT and then I hear people complaining because there was a fire or a fight that broke out at, uh, Holiday Harbor, well, some of that money's going to that fight that broke out at Holiday Harbor. And so how much are you paying for your own public safety? And even if the fire station isn't your bag, if you don't care about that because you don't have anybody living around the area that's, that's covered by that fire station, uh, you still have to look at all the other things that come with that, that money. It's not just a community, it's, it's not just a POA community. Um, we supplement, Aaron and I talked about this weeks ago, we supplement these events. So even, even if the city goes away, the POA's having these events, you really think you're gonna get the county sheriff out there on his own when there's not a city pushing to have extra law enforcement out there? We pay for that. Uh, the city covers the safety of these citizens during any of the major events. So those are things that have, that have to be considered, but those are, the, the question is valid. Do we, do we ask for an increase? Do we ask for it to stay the same? Do we ask for a decrease? Do we look at it and say, we can do without this, but we, we can bring it down to three point nine instead of three point nine five? Um, Aaron's been tasked with that. He will get those numbers for us so we have something that we can actually say, this is what you're getting and this is where we would go with it.
Yeah, that will be part of the July discussion.
Right, and whether or not we want to ask to keep it, and that's another thing I keep seeing, that, oh, a new tax, new tax. No, this is not. It's, it's a tax that we've had that everybody's been paying since it got there. Their forty-three cents or whatever comes out of...
I mean, an important thing to remember is if you look, you, you look at our public safety budgets, four million. The UUT pays for twenty-five percent of that.
Right.
Where do you make up the other seventy-five?
Right.
I think another thing is important, um, 'cause I've been looking at other budgets of other cities. Their public safety runs between forty-two and forty-five percent of their overall operating budget. Uh, we're running almost seventy-five percent. We lack other revenues to be able to offset. So our only choice, uh, if we're gonna continue to survive, is have the UUT. Because it is our only really manageable tax source that we have other than property taxes.
And the fact is, it's not, we're not looking at it that surviving the city. It's public safety and it's, and I, we're not gonna get that level if we, if we are counting on county services, which is not, so. And it's gonna be a matter of the, open to the public and, and decide what they're gonna do, but, and that was an excellent question. And, uh, yeah, we'll talk about it in July.
Is that a discussion you'd like to bring in now regarding, um, funding deputies for family events?
We talked about that. You know, it's interesting because it's something that isn't discussed much. Um, uh, we work a lot with the POA on different things, uh, you know, try to coexist so that we're helping each other, um, figure out problems and answers to problems. Code enforcement, for instance. Something that, that I have thought a lot about is the fact that so much of our budget that goes to safety is paid for these large events. We have a substantial amount of money. We can either talk about it now or we can talk about it then. I don't know if you have the numbers. But I'd ask Aaron to look into... the numbers, but I'd ask Aaron to look into, again, because when we're talking about public safety, I'm not saying eliminate our support of these events, I'm saying that people need to understand that they are enjoying these events, but they're enjoying these events at the cost of the city, they're not going to have that, POA's gonna have to pay for extra enforcement if they're having to go to the county, if we weren't giving that extra enforcement, that money's gonna come out of the POA budget, it's not right now, it's coming out of our budget, which is fine, it's public safety, that's not a bad thing, but I don't think we're getting a lot of, a lot of play on that.
I'm confused, because when, the years I was on the board, the POA hired special additional forces during Fourth of July and yesterday's, I don't remember if there was any other event, but those two in particular, and I remember the cost was horrendous to the POA, the city, I don't believe, was involved at that time, they were paying.
City was paying fifty percent.
Yeah, for fes-estades, we pay fifty percent, so.
But we always pay fifty, yes.
And about the last couple of years, it's probably about thirteen, fourteen thousand, so we're paying almost seven thousand dollars a year for fes-estades.
That's just yesterday's, that's not the extra enforcement on Taco Tuesday, that's not Fourth of July, that, that we always had extra enforcement, that's, that, I mean, there's a lot that we, we put our man-hours to, to support our citizens, and rightfully so.
Well, I, I requested and worked on getting the cost down on that when I was on the POA board, and part of what we did, they were hiring policemen to direct traffic at vacation and Canyon Lake Drive, I said, you don't have to pay the salary of.
Of a deputy.
Deputy to direct traffic, you can get volunteers, people from the city that have had that experience would be happy to volunteer, and they did cut way down on the number, they got volunteers to do a lot of the work that, you know, the areas where there was danger of fights and that sort of thing, is where they placed the deputies, and they did all the menial stuff through volunteers, but I have something I was gonna say about.
You're going.
Oh, the UUT tax, I've talked to a lot of people, people have asked me, are, you know, is that gonna come up again, are we gonna have to keep paying, blah, 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 and my guess would be, if we don't increase it, we probably have a, I would say, eighty percent chance of it passing, if we increase it, I think that's gonna drop to very iffy, maybe fifty percent, because there's a contingency in Canyon Lake that it plants on fighting, the UUT tax, and of course, when people see the numbers, that's going to help, and they see, what'll happen if it, but that same contingency, most of them are the people who thought we should disappropriate anyway, so they don't really care, and they have become rather a vocal, successful group in Canyon Lake through utilizing Facebook.